Florida School Committee on March 30th at Cuss Middle School, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agio?
Here.
Mr. Costa? Mr. Costa? Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Har?
Here.
Mr. Hetza?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Larvee?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed to be acknowledged and permissible. Salute to the flag, please.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God, and freedom, liberty, justice,法治.
Citizen input? Uh, no citizen input. Committee of the whole. First item, vote to approve Fall River Public Schools fifty fiscal year, twenty twenty-one draft and operational budget in the amount of one hundred and twenty million, three hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars, as referred by the Finance Committee, for the purposes of public release in preparation for the public hearing scheduled for Monday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Motion?
To approve.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that vote to approve? Hearing none, Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agio?
Yes.
Mr. Costa? Mr. Costa?
Point of information, he has lag, he has lag on his end.
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetza?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Second article, vote to approve the Fall River Public School fiscal year twenty twenty-one draft transportation budget in the amount of ten million, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, two hundred and eighty-three, as referred by the Finance Committee, for the purpose of public release in preparation for the public hearing scheduled for Monday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agio?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetza?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Discussion and vote to approve the submission of the Student Opportunity Act to the Department of Education and secondary education. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion on the Student Opportunity Act? Paul, then Kev.
Just real quick on this, Mr. Superintendent, great job getting this to before April first. I know there's been so much going on, and this is such uncharted waters that we're in right now. And I just wanted to commend you for getting this through on the date that it was for April first. But my other question is, has it because of all these, all the things that have changed, and in the future, that we don't know what's going to happen in the future, has anything changed from the Student Opportunity Act as far as the foundation and what has, what we're obligated to do with the Student Opportunity Act money?
Great question. First and foremost, we have to acknowledge and thank Dr. Tracy Curly, who was the point lead on the development of the plan. She pulled together all the team members who worked tirelessly and did a really great job of getting granular and getting this thing tight. So I want to appreciate Dr. Curly and all the members of the team that did an excellent job. Great question that you ask about what's changed. As of right now, there are no changes.
Okay.
The governor did put forward a bill to extend the timeline, but that has not passed yet, so it's due on Wednesday. We're hopeful that the committee will approve, will submit on the day it's due. And because it's a living, a dynamic plan, we're going to be updating each year, and I think the intent, as you can see, we're focused on all the right things, and we're using the money purposely, and then we'll measure and report back to the committee on an ongoing basis.
All right, thank you, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Kevin, then Mark.
I just wanted to once again clarify the, there's pieces in here that might change with the budget, which I think is acknowledged.
Yes.
You know, there were some positions in there that we had talked about at the budget hearing, so I think as we go, we're going to have to tweak it a little bit. The main one, though, is if the budget, there's percentages in here, if we don't get the budget from the state based on the crisis, then this all would have to change.
My, is, uh, yes, my understanding is that because the, there may be changes, that it's fluid, if you will, in terms of us. Reap, plant, says a key.
Recession. Back in session, Kev, sorry.
All right, I'm sorry, so, uh, so we would update it at that time.
Thank you, I yield.
Mark Costa?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would just ask after the vote, if we could get a copy of this submission to our local delegation, as well as to Senator, Senator Roderick's. Obviously, they were big proponents of the SOA, and I think to have the delegation's support in terms of what we're looking for and how we're going to use the funding would be appropriate. So I just ask through you, once the vote's taken, if it is any affirmative, that Superintendent sent a copy of that along to the delegation. With that, I yield.
I'll set, Mark. No problem. Josh?
This is the final proposal that we're sending up. This is the final version.
Yeah, so this is the final draft, although understanding that, of course, it can change, and we will update with the, is the final budget process.
On page two, bullet three, it's got like a typo, it says the word students twice in a row.
Okay.
Scratch one of those in forty-five minutes.
Yep.
Thank you for everybody's hard work, though. I just, you know, I know we're sending this up north. Want to look good. I yield.
Anything further? Roll call, uh, I have a motion, second? Yeah, we should. Roll call, please, Deb.
Mr. Agio? Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetza?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Uh, I guess the Superintendent now is going to give us an update on the closure of schools.
Yes. I want to thank the school committee for their leadership throughout this entire school closure. I think the advice of the committee and the council to the Superintendent has been exceptional, and we appreciate the support always of the committee in this work. As of today, we've distributed over forty thousand meals to children in the city of Fall River. That's over, that's a ten days of meal. Distribution sites, we have five school buildings and four parks. We may be adding a fifth park shortly. This is open to any child in the city of Fall River, regardless of where they go to school. Ken and his team and Joe, they also cleaned over two million square feet of facility. Once facilities are cleaned, they are locked down and closed to the public, and enclosed to personnel, any nonessential personnel. So those buildings, we're getting sanitized. We appreciate the committee buying the electrostatic cleaners, and things are going really well with our cleaning and maintenance crews. We want to thank Ken and Joe and everyone for, for the work that they've done there. Thank Bob Cutting and Witson's for their great work. Brian Michael Azak's also been very helpful in that regard. One of the things that, that is, has been made prevalent to all of us is that we've now moved to a time of remote learning. And remote learning is not online education. Sometimes people get confused as to what that means, but the remote learning is a set of principles following the state standards for how to keep students engaged while they are at home. So we've been doing, working with our teachers, our administrators, our support staff, they've all been doing an outstanding job with our continuity of learning plan. That's about to move forward to its next iteration, which will cover the period from April seventh up through May fourth. And we look forward to, uh, uh, great, outstanding activities that will be placed online, but also equally as important is the SEO work, making sure that students and families during this time of, of essentially quarantine, that their also needs are being met in terms of social and emotional needs. I have, um, some questions that I need guidance from the committee, that I'm going to post on the next school committee agenda, and, and this is going to be essentially that over the last several weeks, the Department of Ed has had several conference calls with superintendents and business managers and chief operators regarding vendor payments, and in particular, special education vendors and transportation vendors. I'm looking for the committee's, uh, pulse as to how we're going to address those issues during school closures. So I'm hopeful that at the next school committee meeting, which is
The thirteenth.
The thirteenth, that we have as an agenda item specifically for vendors, and at that time in public session, we can have the conversation about how it is that we will be paying the vendors. It's, it's, it's a recommendation, the guidance of the Department of Ed is, is to pay the vendors, and that is something, again, as the, as the fiscal, um, governance team, is a decision that the committee will make. So again, I'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting. There's, there's also several laws that have been passed, federal laws regarding this issue of vendors, particularly around transportation, and then some of the issues in terms of a stimulus package about how local districts will be able to apply for reimbursement in those areas. So hopefully, we'll have more information between now and the next school committee meeting, and we can have all this information in the open and then have a full conversation. With that, I just want to remind everyone who's watching at home that we're down to critical essential employees only, essentially everyone we need to continue our operations plan, which is education, meals, the cleaning operations, compensation, and the communications. So this is an area where we're going to stay over the next five weeks, and we're hopeful that we will get to a place, I'm hopeful that we'll reopen presently right now in May fourth. So with that, I'll answer any questions that the committee may have.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Superintendent, for what you just suggested, the DESE is suggesting that we pay the vendors, specifically, I'm interested more in the transportation in full?
Right, so that we're getting guidance around the payment of vendors, and if you really pay attention in the weeds in terms of fiscal policy, Department of Revenue always says you never pay for services unless they're rendered.
Correct.
So this is, we've asked for guidance in this regard, so I know the Department of Revenue and the Department of Education and all the business managers across the Commonwealth have all been having conference calls on this topic. I'm hopeful that we'll have more information and some written guidance prior to the next meeting. I wanted to bring it to your attention tonight.
When, when was the last time we paid the transportation companies? Thanks, Kevin.
So, so the last meeting was on March sixteenth? Was the, last meeting, the last day was on March sixteenth for the students? So it was the last day that they provided transportation to us?
And we provided payments to them that week?
I'm sorry?
Did, when's the last time we provided transportation with the, with the payments?
No, we haven't, so we haven't paid the March bills yet.
Okay.
So that'll be part of the March, the March payment, that's.
Okay. So that, so, so we're thinking, I, I mean, I'm thinking that they get those, they get paid for rendered, for services rendered for, up until March sixteenth?
Yes.
And it's, would it be that this committee's decision whether to, whether to pay those to your transportation companies in full, or is it going to be DESE's decision?
It's always a local decision.
Okay.
It'd be the local decision based on guidance, and again, the committee will, will vet that. I know, you know, Vice Chair Costa and I always talk about, you know, these decisions being local decisions, it's so critical that the local committee makes these decisions. And again, advisories are advisories and actions are local, so.
I was just, I was just bringing that up because I thought you might have said that DESE, when they suggest that we pay them full, in full, that's what they want us to do, but we don't have to do that. That's my, that's my point that I'm asking.
Again, local, local decisions, local governance, and you guys will be making those decisions.
And is that, is that, obviously, this has never happened before, as far as I, as I know.
As far as I know.
But is there anything in their contract, in the bus contract, that has any stipulations that, under the, under certain circumstance, that we are not obligated to pay them?
Not, not that, not that I'm aware of, no.
Nothing like that? Okay. All right, thank you, I yield.
Kev?
Just a quick question on the, with the closures and technology, if I recall, technology, the Chromebooks and stuff? Did I recall that seeing that they were, if somebody needed one for home, they would get them, they're in the?
We don't have the ability to go to one-on-one yet, but we've been doing our best in some cases, but. You. For, for staff? Yeah.
So if a student doesn't have access, a student needs access at home, they're not getting one at current?
Right, but that, but that's why we do packets. So the photocopying of the packet work is critical. Folks don't even have printers at home, so it's like we got to photocopy anything, because we may have all this great stuff online, but folks aren't able to print it at home, even if they have the access. One of the great things about the technology is some of the Zoom and Google Classroom stuff that, that, that teachers and Saks and stuff have been doing, but we're also now doing it tele, telephone. So we're picking up the phone, we're making those phone calls, we're doing the best we can to provide both special education services and ELL services as needed.
Yeah, I think you're doing the best you can, I have no problem with that. My concern would be at the high school level, where there's credit bearing, like grades and kids need stuff, that if there's any votes needed by the committee, I'm certainly willing to give those to have high school folks that need the credits more so than other stuff. I, I think the high school needs to be looked at differently because of the timing and kids are graduating and that, so as far as this member's concerned, if you need votes on any of that, I think we can improve, you know, go for that. I think about the Verizon thing that we just did, but that's not yet, right? There's no way to get them to say hurry up?
Yeah, we, uh, no, but we had a, they canceled the, the conference in Texas, it's now be online, so we're assuming that that will still get up and operational as soon as.
Yeah, they're not going to just send us thousands.
Right, no, not yet.
But you get the idea.
But, but you're absolutely right about, I, I, you know, I'm going to send to the committee in my Friday email, uh, where we are with grading, and the state has talked about not having an answer, but is there, again, it would be an advisory to move to a pass fail, but you're right about how at high school, that is very hard to, to move to a pass fail, particularly with classes with GPAs and, and especially with, you know, students applying for college. So what we've been asked families to do is to amass all the work that they've been doing, record it, keep a log of other activities, and that's have a folder, a file, if you will, and that the hope is, is that we'll use it all as part of a portfolio to look at the entire year. The good news is, schools on a, correct me if I'm wrong, Maria, schools on the trimester ended right before break, so we're able to get grades for all the elementary schools and the two K to eight schools, and those will be going out this week for the time that ended right before we went to closure.
My, my last comment is about the, so the students that are in need, when I'm looking at high school kids, they're taking credit recovery, both at the, Durfey, I think, has a credit recovery, Edgenuity, RPA, the same thing, some of those kids need to like double up and do all this stuff online. That's where I'm getting at. I think that if there is needs for those particular kids, if there's any way that we can have access to those individuals at home, they need a Chromebook, you know, we're taking care of the neediest kids when the school's in session. Come in after school, you do an extra couple hours, you're going to be able to graduate. What do we do now if that doesn't happen? So if there's any kind of plans that you can look at to, to help with that?
Yeah, I know my.
Especially at the high school.
Yep, I know my team and my task force that's looking at this, these are all issues on the table, options on the table, and, you know, I think your point's well taken. One of the things that's, you know, that's already been waived by the commissioner is around the competency-based determination for like MCAS, this, so you get kids who are seniors that may have, haven't passed, and you got to pass to graduate, that, that those are part, all part of, of this bill that the governors filed, hasn't been approved yet, but this bill that would allow us to allow those kids to graduate if they're seniors and met their, all their other requirements.
So if there's any policy, maybe it does not, I quite frankly, in this crisis, think you should have the authority to give out those things if you need to, but if there's votes that need to be taken, that's why I bring the issue up today.
Yeah.
Because if it's not the policy that we can give a device home, like we were going to go through the Verizon thing, we were going to have to create policies, as far as I'm concerned, waive all those policies and get the kids.
Yeah, well, I mean, if I needed to give out devices to certain kids to be able to, I can do that right now, regardless, the good news is, is that I have this school committee meeting on the thirteenth that I can bring forward more information about grading, if I got to get changing of, of grading policy, because that is something that the school committee adopts, so we have a little bit of time.
I think we're on the same page.
Yeah.
With that, thank you for your work, I yield.
Uh, Mimi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Dr. Malone, just a question, what's the, the kind of percentage of kids that are working on the packets versus online? Not counting the high school students, obviously.
Yeah.
Do, are you getting feedback from the teachers, or which is?
What I'm hearing is most kids are using the packets, the actual paper. At the high school level, you do have more students using online, particularly in some of your advanced coursework. But, you know, one of the things that's, that's critical here, and I sent the letter out from the commissioner today, what, what this, this position that the Department of Education is taking is that we're not continuing the learning, so if, if we went to day one hundred and twenty in algebra, we're not expecting the kids to be doing one hundred and twenty-one, one hundred and twenty-two, one hundred, day one hundred and twenty-three at home. What we're expecting them to do is master all the skills that they learned so far and go deep in those skills, but it's not teaching new skills, because that's where the issue of equity, particularly with spread kids, particularly with second language kids, where it runs headlong into our zeal to, to continue growing and developing. So we want kids to do all the stuff that they need, but we're not continuing to teach Algebra One the way we were up to closure. So the online component, you know, people, we have everything stored, you have all the resources online, you can look at them online, but if you don't have that ability, we also can print it for you, and now you have it. We're also giving out novels at different grade levels, novels with, with, with the questions and the, and the study guides, et cetera, that those are, you know, the lack of a better term, analog, that, you know, you're actually using a book, and, and those are things that we're also doing to support the learning. But at the same time, when I tell parents who call, you know, make sure you're logging the other stuff. What's the other stuff? The other stuff is, hey, you're, you know, this is, the commissioner used the concept of, we want kids to build a, I think it was the commissioner, build a garden, make a garden, create a garden, and, and learn about the life cycles and biology, like, if, now that's not one of the activities we have, but if kids are doing those, you log that, you, you keep account of it, and, and we'll see that you did that. Does that make sense?
Yes. Do, are, do we have, presently have students that are struggling right now, making contact with their teachers and vice versa?
Yeah.
Due to lack of?
Phone numbers and sometimes language barriers, and sometimes, you know, the churn in terms of kids moving, those kinds of things. So we've had some real issues with making those contacts, and we're going to keep trying to reach out to as many families. I think the families that are coming in to pick up meals has been great, because there's able to be that contact in that regard, but there's still a lot of families that, that we have not been able to have successful contact with.
But that's something everybody's worked, your team's working on currently?
Yeah, and, I mean, you know, so, like, the most extreme case is that, you know, we, we have a certain, a number of families that we're working with very, very, at a very deep level. We got a teams that are going out and doing house visits with those families, but we don't have the ability to do house visits with all families. And given the guidelines around interaction, that, that has been toned down, so we're trying to use all the technology, social media, et cetera, to make those connections, but there are definitely families that, that we haven't been able to, but the team is going to continue to work. We're going to have some more written guidance within the next, from, from our own department around what the continuity of learning looks like over the next week.
I yield, thank you.
Tommy?
Yeah, thanks. I'd like to preface my, thank you, Mr. Chairman, like to preface my comments by saying I, I appreciate the effort that the schools are doing to reach out under these trying circumstances. Good job, Mr. Superintendent. It's not going to be perfect. I spoke with a teacher over the weekend, the teacher is exuberant in the fact that he's reaching out to many of his social studies students via technology, but still only around fifty percent worth of the student caseload. So we're not reaching everybody, but we're reaching quite a few, which is really good under these initial circumstances of crisis. With that being said, Mr. Superintendent, I'd like to raise the specter of the chairman, the chairman of, of education, looking at algebra and, and understanding what is the reality that, you know, more than fifty percent of the kids or so are probably not doing continuity of learning, and therefore, that whole skill set is just going to decrease and maybe replacing it with a more practical application, like a business math and accounting ledger, ledger, something that'll help the kids understand some real world, you know, in-your-face mathematics, run a household, run a business, that kind of thing. So those are the questions that linger on my mind, especially in this time of immobility. With that, I yield.
Yep, and we, your, your points are well taken, Mr. Corey. Our team is working on real-world interdisciplinary, project-based activities that incorporate a lot of what that you discussed, because again, it's not so much that we're teaching algebra, the next phase of whatever it is that we're learning in algebra, it's mastering everything that we've learned so far, so we don't get that summer learning loss that you mentioned, which is real, but then also making it contextualized so that it's real-world stuff. So we're, we have activities that are in that spirit, and again, I appreciate what you're saying, we're doing the best job we can possibly do, and it's not easy, definitely for sure, but we got the right people working on it, and the unions, FREA and FRAA, our members have been doing an outstanding job on this task force, identifying what it means, you know, what do we want, what are these activities, what do these experiences look like for first graders, for second graders, et cetera. et cetera.
Uh, Mimi?
Just quickly, Dr. Malone, uh, I've had a few parents reach out to me just with a couple concerns on the school lunches, uh, just the safety, the safety procedures that are going, uh, that are being put into it for distribution. Uh, can you just speak a little bit on the process and, and maybe just ease a few minds on, on, on the safety of it right now?
Sure. I mean, I'll have Ken come up and speak, uh, specifically, uh, but I've been out at all sites. Uh, we are doing a great job of making the meals, sealing the meals, so everything is sealed. Families come in, when they grab the meals, uh, we're using safe, uh, you know, essentially industry-standard, uh, social distancing practices and with the protective gear, et cetera. Uh, and the meals from talking to kids, uh, have been great. I'll let Ken talk about some of the other specifics.
Sure. So the, um, most of the meals are packaged elsewhere. They're, they're, they're coming shipped, um, and sealed, obviously, in an environment for food preparation. Uh, we are handling, um, fruits, vegetables, um, which is following, following the same process that we follow year-round. All of those packagings, all of the packaging is being done either at a facility or, or at our schools, our cooking kitchens, and then packaged, um, we're ahead of, uh, usually we're ahead of ourselves by anywhere from seven to ten thousand meals, um, so that we can get them out, uh, to the, uh, different sites that we have. And, um, again, all, all the process is exactly, um, as it's been happening throughout the school year.
Kenny, you're very competent. All this is very safe for our parents and our students?
Absolutely. Absolutely. We're handling this food, um, in, in the proper manner, um, in, in the, um, environment that is safe, sterile, and, uh, we have absolutely complete confidence in, in the process.
Thank you. I yield.
Um, I, I've been out to like five of the sites myself, and, um, I've seen no problems out there. Mimi, those, uh, those bags are almost all pre-bagged. They just hand them a bag and say, do you want a chocolate milk or a plain milk, and off they go. Um, most of it's outdoors, even when it's in a school, they're right out the door with it, so I think it's, uh, safe. But I do have one comment. Has there been any discussion going forward, um, Dr. Malone, about the impact of this shortened year is gonna have on, um, MCAS testing going forward? I mean, 'cause...
Right. So right now...
These kids are not getting a full year.
Right. So we're all pushing in the same direction, I think, is a state association of, uh, superintendents to essentially not have any testing this year. However, the state's been given an initial waiver from the federal government that the commissioner can choose to do that, but he has not made that decision yet. So we don't have any other answers other than what I sent out in the letter, uh, to parents today that we emailed to parents from the commissioner, that says decisions regarding the MCAS will be made, uh, in the future. Uh, but one of the options is to not have, uh, any testing and then hold, uh, all the accountability and, uh, essentially in abeyance for a year, if you will, and then come back at it next year. What that means for this year's current 10th graders would likely mean that they would take the MCAS in 11th grade. Uh, but that, that's, that's all the information I have right now. I, I don't have anything to share other than that my association, I think your association is the, uh, uh, School Committee Association, I think the Mass Teachers Association, and others, I think, are all united around, let's, uh, let's take a year off of, uh, MCAS testing and just use common sense.
Right. And, but, but going forward, even next year, when it's reinstated, they're not gonna use the same test they were asking kids to know, knowledge on of a full year of school in grade nine and then coming in there halfway through and, by the way...
Right. My understanding is that if they took the year, they would measure it in, uh, the spring again, and it would be on that year's growth. So it would, you know, the 10th grade test would still cover this ninth and 10th grade material.
Well, I hope they're fair.
I agree, but I mean, I, I don't want you to think, I don't want you to think it, it would be something, because I haven't heard any that, you know, if we came back right away in September, oh, we gotta do the MCAS?
No, that's not happening.
That wouldn't, that's not gonna...
That's not gonna happen.
Uh, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Superintendent, because it's law in Massachusetts that students take the MCAS and pass, and my understanding is Governor Baker filed the bill with the legislature to weigh in on this. Once they've done that, is that to suspend it, or does that go back to the commissioner, uh, decision?
So there's two, two things at play, Mark. One is the federal law requiring assessment, and the other is the state law. So there's two things that have to happen.
Right.
We already have the initial waiver, uh, from the federal government to not have any assessments this year. Uh, waiting to hear about the bill, uh, that the governor put forward. My understanding is that the House has, uh, split the bill that the governor put forward, uh, into two separate, one an education thing and, and one a, uh, a timeline of budgeting thing that includes the, uh, restaurants and serving beer and apple, those kinds of things separate from the education thing. Uh, I don't have any information other than you're right, I believe it will go back to the commissioner, even if it's, uh, voted on the way. I think probably what they'll use is the same language, is that they're gonna vote to do it, leave it to discretion of the commissioner, but again, that's board discretion, uh, and, and, uh, they'll make that decision. It'll be the Board of Education.
Right. So if you could just keep, obviously, the committee, if you get additional information, keep us in the loop, only because I think I share the same concern as everybody who's at the table or virtually at the table, that most of the questions I get around MCAS, what's happening with it, are students gonna be required to make it up? Today, someone was asking me about the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, and does that affect a student who potentially was in line to be awarded a scholarship if they don't take it this year? And there's just so many questions, but, and obviously, it'll, the information hopefully will come out eventually, but, you know, if you can just keep us in the loop on that and, you know, I, the more information we have, obviously, the more information we can convey when we're asked those questions. But, um, my understanding is the board's meeting tomorrow. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the, the Board of Ed is meeting tomorrow, also virtually, uh, like we're doing now. Uh, so I know on the agenda are, uh, several items that have to do with the closure, uh, and, and, you know, I'll keep the board informed as whatever decisions made tomorrow.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I yield.
Uh, Tom?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that. That was a great question to open up, uh, the door to my, my, not my question, but my comment. Uh, Dr. Malone, what a great time for the, for the Board of, the Board at DESI to consider dropping MCAS. High-stakes testing in general has, has been so difficult for, uh, you know, everybody, the bureaucracy it created. Uh, I'm in favor of just getting rid of the high-stakes testing altogether. This is a moment where we can really look at that. If we're gonna suspend MCAS for one year, then it better, somebody better do something on the other end of that that's gonna make up for the suspension of MCAS. It can't be high stakes, 'cause it's just, this is the time now to really look at it closely. With that, I yield.
Uh, anything further for Dr. Malone? Um, do we, um, do we have a reason to go into executive session?
Uh, yes, we do, Mayor. Your direction, I can read the information off.
Uh, please.
Okay. There'll be several matters for executive session, beginning with Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2183. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all cafeteria workers of the four of a school system represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open meeting may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Second would be Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2183. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all maintenance employees of the four of a school system represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Third, Mass General Laws, Chapter, excuse me, Chapter 38, Section 2183. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all custodial employees of the four of a school system represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open meeting may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2183. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all safety, security employees of the four of a school system represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2183. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all civil service clerical employees of the four of a school system represented by the Four River Department of Civil Service Clerical Employees Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Next would be Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2183. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all paraprofessional employees of the four of a school system represented by the Four River Federation of Paraprofessionals, the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Also, Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2183. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Four River Administrators Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Lastly, Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, 21A3. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all professional teaching employees of the four of a school system, including coaches, Title I, teachers, nurses, occupational physical therapists, and specialists in the teaching profession represented by the Four River Educators Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Uh, at the end of the executive session, uh, Mr. Chair, we would reconvene. There may or may not be statements at that time.
I'll entertain a motion.
Seconded.
Uh, roll call that, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We stand in recess.
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Hetzel?
Sorry.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larve? Mayor Coogan?
Here. Anybody have any new business?
New business?
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
I just wanted to, um, uh, bring, bring, uh, something that I didn't know about previous to, uh, today. One of our teachers is doing a community uplift project and is inviting any of us to participate in any kind of way, whether we wanna hold up a motivational placard via, by the video, or actually help sing the song Lean On Me. He wants to record Lean On Me with all of us just calling in, you know, on, on our cellphones and singing it on the cellphones. And he wants to do that, uh, as a targeted way to send a message out to all the kids in the city, our students and our teachers, and all of our parents, that, you know, we're all in this together. So I thought it was a nice thing. It's Nathaniel Jayzac, the social studies teacher at Derfie. If anybody's interested, they can just email him at NJzac@fourriverschools.org. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just real quick, I know that, um, when we come to our meetings, we sign the financial statements, the signatures of the school committee members. Um, because of this certain crisis that we're in, I'm just wondering, because I talked to Kevin about it, um, just real briefly, but now that I'm thinking about it even more, is there a way, maybe in the future, that we would not have to, you know, just sign it? Could it, something come over the software where you just click and sign? Because I don't know what, what, what's gonna transpire in the near future, uh, in the future for this, but I'm just throwing it out there if you could look into something like that.
So I don't know if Doc, you sign, or, uh, when we go to the board docs, if there's an ability to sign, I don't know. Like, look into that and get...
Yeah, just, just a thought.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further business? Motion or adjourn?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.